All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Tuesday, April 5th, 6:00 PM meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And like always, we will start with our invocation by Ms. Laskolet and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Chair Don Sharp. Scan if you're able.
Thank you. Okay. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to meet together, to take care of the business of Goochlin County. We thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us and will in the future. We thank you for our law enforcement officers, particularly those who are in harm's way at all times. We ask you of protection for our military abroad and overseas. So, thank you for being with us tonight. And in the Lord's name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Laskolet and Mr. Sharp. All right. Moving right along to Chair's comments. I will go ahead and just say, great to be in Goochlin County. Mr. County Administrator, your turn.
Okay, I'll be a little longer than that. I would just like to remind the general public that the burn ban is still in effect until the end of April. Our fire and rescue folks have been running around the last few days chasing some existent and some non-existent fires because with the winds the way they are, the smoke blows all over the place. And so, we get calls from the east end and the west end, and it's the same fire. So, please be careful. The ban bans any burning before 4:00 PM and with certain distances from woods. If you have any questions about that, there's a message on our website that we updated today. And you can also go to the Department of Forestry website to see more information on the ban. And that goes, as I said, till the end of April. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Alvarez. All right, now we will move to approval of our action meeting minutes from, I'm sorry, to citizen comment. This is time for anybody to come to speak to the board on issues that have to do with Goochlin County that are not on the agenda. You have three minutes. Please come forth, give us your name and address. And I will open the citizen comment period.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manikin Road. Monakin Conservation District Chairman this year, actually. Yeah, Mr. Peterson is like, whoa, how about that? I do want to take a moment. I know that the budget is the primary, if not only, topic tonight. And Monakin really does appreciate the support that we have gotten from the county over these past years. We work hard to be good stewards. We provide you all with quarterly reports. I reminded Mr. Alvarez saying that in the middle of the reports, he used to provide people, he put a sentence in there that says, "Call us and I'll give you 50 bucks." And nobody ever called him. So, I'm not going to tell you we put that in ours, but we might. So, nobody ever calls us. But we do appreciate it, the facilities that we have. And that's the cooperation. And specifically, I want to compliment and appreciate Mr. Alvarez and Mr. Buzzard, both, who took one for the team. They met with me to talk about developing a relational database that would allow us to reach out to the agriculture community in a proactive way. There are over 100 different best management practices that can be done by the ag community. Farmers are busy folks. I mean, the sunrise to sundown is not just an old saying. And so, we want to be proactive in reaching out to them. We have received significant funding for the BMPs. Every indication, once the state budget is completed, we will have the same level of BMP funding available in the next fiscal year. And we really do want to reach out to the farming community and say, here are opportunities to improve water quality, soil conservation. And knowing how to get to those folks is, you know, we're really dealing with three-by-five cards in corporate memory. So, Mr. Buzzard, Mr. Alvarez, it's not a done deal, but there is some grant money available from the National Federation Wildlife Council. So, we're pursuing it. We appreciate your continued support for the ag community and Monakin. And Ms. Biskowitz, thank you for reminding them that I was in the audience because they try different ways just to move right into the agenda. But I'm always here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Congratulations on chair. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the citizen comment period. Now, we'll move to approve our minutes from the February 22nd meeting, our March 1st meeting, our March 10th, and our March 18th. Do I have a motion?
All right, so, Mr. Chair, I move approval of the meeting minutes from February 22nd, March 1st, March 10th, and March 18th.
Second. Thank you, Ms. Laskolet, Mr. Sharp. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're moving into our consent agenda. And we have three items on our consent agenda this morning, or this afternoon. Are we comfortable doing all three? Or does anybody request to pull anybody out? Yeah, usually, well, usually we decide if we're going to pull one out first. Mr. Ruff.
Want me to give you an update?
Please.
All right, Mr. Chairman, the first item is a resolution requesting the Department of Transportation to accept roads in Parkside Village, Section 4, into the secondary state highway system for maintenance. The second item is one that I'm very glad we're finally getting to, is provide me authorization to execute two contracts for the purchase of land for the future site of the Sandy Hook Fire Station. And the third item is authorization to loan the Goochlin Volunteer Fire Rescue Association $300,000 for renovations at Fire Rescue Station Monakin Company 1.
Okay, Board, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Alvarez on that? And now, does anybody have any change of opinion? Would anybody like to pull one out? Or do you take them as a slate?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, the third item, the loan of the $300,000, would there be matching funds from the volunteers?
Yes, sir. The volunteers are putting up $300,000, and we're loaning them $300,000 that they'll pay back over 20 years, I believe. Fifteen years.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Hopkins?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, then. Sorry. All right, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of all three consent agenda items.
Second. Thank you. Do we have a motion, second and discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, great. All right, now we'll move into our public hearings. And it looks like we'll have Ms. Horlacher for our first item.
Good evening. Mr. Chair, members of the board. Barbara Horlacher, Deputy County Administrator. We have four public hearings tonight on budget-related items. The first public hearing is to consider the FY '22, or not FY '22, calendar year 2022 real estate tax rate. And so, due to an increase in assessments, and because this budget is based on an unchanged rate of 53 cents per $100 of value, we have advertised an effective tax rate increase of 10.4%. And as I said, the tax rate will remain, according to this budget, at 53 cents. And are there any questions?
That's okay. All right, doesn't look like any.
Okay.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Okay, our second public hearing tonight is on the FY '23 total county budget, the 25-year CIP, and all other tax rates, not including the real estate tax rate. So, a lot of numbers before you. This is the total county all funds budget. And some of the numbers have changed a bit since the proposed budget, and I'll explain that in a minute. This is our FY '23 capital budget, broken out by functional area. To summarize the numbers, we have a $16 million capital budget for FY '23. And now, I will talk a little bit about any changes that have been made since February. And we will incorporate those into the numbers that you'll be presented to vote on on April 19th. So, when I say amendments, I'm talking to overall changes in the budget, anything that may have increased the total budget. And there were really only two changes to the total budget numbers. One was on the county side where we increased our debt service to match the debt service schedule of the 2022 GO bonds because when we did the proposed budget, we didn't know the final debt service numbers. And also, there are some school budget changes, which I'll show you on the next slide. So, we did increase the debt service in the proposed budget. And that would be funded by personal property taxes. The school funds, you see the school operating fund increased slightly. The, when it says local revenues, that doesn't mean local transfer. That means local revenues that aren't state or federal. And, but does not include the transfers. The school cafeteria fund slightly increased. And then, the school federal grants fund is a $264,000 increase for more federal funds. So, those are the things that actually change the total budget numbers. And then, also, there's some other changes that don't impact total numbers. So, in reviewing all the budget and working with the Commissioner of Revenue on various values for personal property, in the proposed budget, we said that we would be able to lower the personal property rate from 395 to 385. And in reviewing values and doing some more calculations, we have concluded that we can lower the personal property tax rate to 375, which will be a 20 cent per $100 value decrease, and still keep our personal property numbers the way they were in the original budget. So, there will be a, that is included now in the budget. Also, some transfers internally within the budget so that didn't include the overall, it doesn't increase the overall budget. But the library will be funded at about $565,000. And this will actually allow for four additional open hours. So, the library will be able to stay open until 9:00 PM, Mondays through Thursdays. So, in working with the library, we were able to come up with that plan. Also, all the approved positions have been moved up into the salary and benefits of the departments. And in terms of merit increases, we had always proposed an increase for all county employees of 3%. We were also able to work in an additional 2% for all county employees that are not uniform public safety who received increases in the FY '22 budget. So, those are the major changes in terms of the tax rates. You can see the 375 is reflected on here. And of course, we earlier in the year had changed the volunteer fire rescue personal rate. That changing the personal property rate to 375 also lowers the rate on aircrafts and boats. And you see that the Tuckahoe Creek Service District rate is unchanged at 32 cents. So, that was a quick review of everything. Are there any questions?
Ms. Laskolet?
Thank you, Ms. Horlacher. Back on the library, maybe it's just the way it was worded on the slide, but there are four, this proposal is four nights a week, open additional three hours. Is that correct?
They are actually open until 8 o'clock currently. So, they will now be open until 9 o'clock. So, the current hours are 60 hours a week. It will now be 64 hours a week. And Monday through Thursday, they'll be open until 9:00 PM.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Board?
Mr. Peterson? Just again, maybe to read this in the record, the change in the debt service amount, the debt that we just issued, the general obligation bonds, are fixed rates. There is no floating rates. There is no exposure there to increases in interest rates.
Correct. It's just that we didn't have the final numbers before we issued the debt, so.
I'll read that in the record, thank you.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board members. My name is Karen Horn. I live at 3205 Doublebrook Road. I am also the school board member representing District 3. Just wanted to speak a little bit on this process that begins almost as soon as we approve one budget. We are beginning the building of the needs-based budgets. And it's been very impressive to see, whether you want to call them an agency, a department, a division, all of the providers of services in our county, what they have presented to you for their needs of our community. And I would say that this process is really very representative of the people, for the people, and by the people. We know, as I said, as that budget process begins, it begins at the closest level. It begins within those offices, the people that work with the citizens of Goochlin County, whether they be children or senior citizens. And so, they discuss, what do we still need? What are the changing needs? Because we've had challenges year after year. So, again, it's a very impressive process. And it is truly of the people, for the people, and by the people. And I thank you for representing us all as you work to support and approve the budgets that have been presented. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Anyone else?
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manikin Road. Thank you, guys. I had a conversation earlier today with one of the Louisa County board members. And he made a comment that 70% of what their board does is budget, budget-related. So, the, follow the money is a phrase you'll hear out there. You know, where is the money going? Because that does, budgets show priorities. And I am appreciative that my big three are transportation, education, and public safety. And maybe not so much transportation, but getting there. But public safety and education are significant parts of what you folks, dare I say, the county has worked on. And so, I'm not going to take three minutes because I'd just stay here and say thank you for the next two minutes and 13 seconds. And yeah, all of a sudden, it's not so bad, is it? But no, I truly have seen some of the sausage-making going on and do appreciate, and whether or not 70% of your all's efforts are budget-related or not, might be more, actually. I do appreciate it because I tell people, I'm living the dream. I live in Goochlin. I'm here because I want to be, not because I have to be. So, thank you all. And just as was commented, you're going to start on this in, what, two more weeks? So, maybe week and a half. It depends on what the vote is tomorrow, if not already today. So, thank you, folks. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Okay. All right, not seeing any other. I'm going to close the public hearing. All right.
Okay, our next two public hearings are on ordinance changes. And the first one, ordinance change has to do with increasing the real estate tax relief for the elderly and disabled program. So, this budget includes people that qualify for our senior or disabled program will now be exempt from $1,000 in real estate taxes, an increase from $900. Are there any questions on that?
Don't see any.
Okay.
I'll open the public hearing.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manikin Road. I referenced a conversation I had with a supervisor from Louisa. On that amendment that you all are considering, he commented that Louisa had doubled the exemption that they made available. So, I don't know that that's throwing down a gauntlet or anything, but they did double their exemption. And, yeah, well, I'll give them your number if you want to call. Yeah, so, but I do appreciate that the safety net. Okay, wait a minute, this is my three minutes. Oh, I'm getting a little, I'm going to sit down now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
And our final public hearing is on proposed fee changes. The first fee change is an increase in the base residential plumbing and mechanical permit fee to $100. The second change is to add a $50 fee if you request a $30, 30-day extension of a temporary occupancy permit. And the third change is to amend the fireworks permit fee to add an hourly charge for the fire marshal's time over three hours. And then, the other fee changes have to do with utilities. So, we are proposing that we increase the bimonthly volume and service charges for water 3%, and for wastewater 4%, which would result in an average bimonthly increase of $3.88. Are there any questions on fee changes?
Court, Ms. Laskolet?
Okay, so, Ms. Horlacher, would you, what is the reason for increasing the base residential permit fees to $100 and the $50 30-day extension?
Basically, I don't want to speak for them, but to recoup our costs. Because the fee was, the base fee was only $30 before. So, to recoup our costs for permits. And the 30-day extension, I'm not really sure about. I guess I'll let Joanne speak to that.
Evening, Ms. Hunter.
Good evening, Board. Joanne Hunter, Deputy County Administrator. So, for the first one, the base residential plumbing and mechanical fee, we were benchmarking, as you can recall, about three years ago, we reduced all our building inspection fees. But we did benchmark against all of the other ones. It used to be much more complicated. You paid a $30 fee, and then depending on the price of the work, you had a little extra fee. And so, this makes it a little more uniform. It's streamlined. So, the fee is not really changing, but it's just becoming a little less complex on how you have to explain it to somebody. And what we've been seeing is that people who get a temporary CO, that's for unusual circumstances. And then, they have a timeframe, and then they're still not ready. So, there is some cost of having to go out there, checking it. It's not ready, having to go back out there again. So, it's sort of just an incentive for them, if they have a temporary CO, to get the project done at that time.
Right. If you don't mind, a follow-up question. So, are those delays caused by not being able to get materials with so-called supply chain disruptions and that kind of thing?
Not necessarily. Usually, the temporary is for some sort of unusual. I guess there could be some supply chain issues. But typically, they're not at the point of getting a TCO if they have supply chain issues. It's something typically like they have, you know, for a business may have everything in except for they haven't been able to pave their handicap parking space because the weather hasn't allowed for it. And so, they get a temporary. It's typically more weather-related or some unusual circumstance.
Okay, just, I'm just thinking of folks who might already be, you know, disadvantaged, if you will, because of things out of their control.
Right. And when we issue a temporary CO, we work with them on the time. It's typically a 30-day because it's something minor that they couldn't get done because of weather or something like that. But if it was a supply chain issue and they said, you know, we're not going to get, you know, the fire signs for 60 days, we would give a 60-day TCO. So, you don't have to have just a 30-day TCO.
So, there is some flexibility for situations? Okay. That's the only thing concerned because they're already, you know, distressed, if that's the right word, because of issues out of their control. And then, now we're adding, I know $50 isn't the end of the world, but, you know, another $50.
We are seeing a lot of supply chain issues, but that's typically early in the project, particularly in like stormwater pipes and windows and things like that. They wouldn't be at a TCO stage if they couldn't get those things, so.
Okay. And when do we issue a TCO?
That means that it's, they're getting, they're ready to be occupied. So, that's their final permit.
Okay.
So.
And that being said, what, it's the same thing you were saying earlier. The space is safe to occupy, but there is something that still needs doing, whether it's landscaping or grass.
Yeah, often it's landscaping or final grading or something, and it's typically weather-related.
Okay, all right, I just, yeah. All right, thank you.
Board, any other questions? Thank you. All right, I'll open the public hearing.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Manikin Road. And I appreciate the explanation because I was scratching my head, why would we charge $50 for a $30 extension? And what I, my interpretation is, we're now charging somebody because of the weather. That there's weather delays that they can't get, whatever, landscaping or seeding or something that requires a permanent occupancy. I did the math in my head. And so, if we're doing 100 of these years, we're going to generate another $5,000 in revenue. And government that does the least governs the best. Is this something that is a requirement? And if it is an issue, and we really have because there is construction growth going on in the county. If this is happening a lot, I don't know. Is there a solution, maybe along the lines of Ms. Laskolet, that we extend it from 30 to 60 to 90 and just say, the weather happens? We, nobody that I'm aware of has that in control. And it's just one less piece of paperwork that has to be followed up on. But as was commented, 50 bucks is not going to just bankrupt somebody, at least, I hope not. But is it just one more thing in the ordinance book, which is pretty healthy as it is right now? And that's just the citizen's comment that you opened yourselves up to. And here I am, sitting down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing.
If I may, Board members, I do not recall the details of this, but there has been a situation recently where Gary felt somebody was sort of abusing this process and just to keep extending a TCO and not really working to get whatever was done. And I remember he made my office aware of it, but he didn't need us to jump in and do anything. And so, I think there is, you know, while $50 isn't the world either, that takes a lot of staff time when somebody doesn't move something forward. So, there's a mix of, there's a little bit here to make sure you're working to get something done. It comes back to us if we do have to do that additional inspection to give you the extension. So, there's a little element of that, too.
Thank you. All right. I think I closed the public hearing, but I'm not sure. I did? Okay, thanks. I know you all watch me very closely. Appreciate it. All right, so that is our last, our last public hearing. These, we will be looking to pass the budget on Tuesday, April 19th. And with that, I will adjourn the board. And with that, I will adjourn the board to a closed meeting at the board, which will be interviewing candidates for the county position of county administrator at an undisclosed occasion within the next 15 days, as is permissible under state law, until Tuesday, actually, we'll actually have the meeting on Tuesday, April 19th, to approve the budget. And the Tuesday, May 3rd, 12:30, Board Supervisors Audit and Finance Committee meeting, which is open to the public, and we'd love you to be there. And then, Tuesday, May 3rd, 6:00 p.m., meeting, regular board meeting, and that as well is open to the public. Thank you so much, and we are adjourned.